Today, we are going to call this meeting to order. It is Wednesday, January 29th, 2025 at 4:01. We are having a workshop for the 2025-2026 School Budget Review. All right.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. As we get started for our initial meeting here with the school committee, tonight's meeting is going to be focused on the expense side. We're going to go through overall, we've got an overall presentation, and then we're also going to try to break it down by article. Our next school committee budget workshop is going to be next Monday, February 3rd, at 4 o'clock. And that evening, we're really going to focus on the revenue side. So tonight is more expense-driven. Before we get started, you can see you have your budget booklets that have been prepared for you, that is broken out by article. We also have a copy of this afternoon's presentation. And so those are resources for you to be able to go through. We're also going to be able to, like we've done in the past, on our school's website, we're going to have a 2025-2026 budget page or resource that's going to include all of our PowerPoint presentations. It's going to include the overall budget and also any recordings of budget meetings so that people can go back to be able to follow through with that. And before we get started, also, a lot of work has already gone into this budget that happens before the scenes, before you, as you get your first look at it this evening. Big thank you to our business administrator Cheryl Fornier and her team, working really hard and our administrators to be able to put this budget together. This is something that we start back in the fall. It's usually a pretty comprehensive process. This year was made even more challenging because we did change platforms. So as we were changing platforms in terms of, wait a minute, this is how we've used to be able to come back and submit our budget. There were a lot of efficiencies for that. But as we know, our system was outdated and archaic. So we did, this is our first budget going through with our new platform. There was a lot of work that went on before that for us to be able to transfer everything over. So I want to recognize Cheryl and her team for being able to do that. As the budgets come in to us, Cheryl will meet with each administrator in December to go over their budgets in an overview. And then in the beginning of January is when I join, Steve joins, and we meet with Cheryl, and we meet with each administrator to go through their budgets line by line in terms of being able to come back to get to this point that we're presenting to you this evening. Just to also let people know, the charge that we have is that we do have to deliver an approved budget to the city council for the first Tuesday in March. And so we are going to take, starting now up through February, we do have to have an approved budget that will be presented to the city on March 4th, to the city council. And then through the month of March is when the city council will work through the budget, both the city and the school budget, so that they will have an approved school budget by their first meeting, their first Tuesday in April. And that lines up for us to be able to go out to referendum, vote a referendum to approve the school budget. As you're probably aware, the school budget does need to be approved by our citizens. The city budget does not. That is something done by charter, so we have to have ours done by April. So our task is, by that first March 4th meeting, we do have to have an approved budget on our end. So as we get in, we do have a presentation. If we can go to the next slide. I do want to focus, there's some changes district-wide, just for you to kind of lay out here, some things to, some overarching things right from the beginning. There's a new FMLA tax, Paid Family Medical Leave, that you've probably heard about. And that is, that started for us January 1st, 2025. And last year's budget, if you remember, we did have to put this in our current budget, the current budget that we're in. We had to also put this in the budget. This year coming forward, we're going to have to once again do that, but instead of doing it for six months, we're going to do it for 12 months. This is a 1%. We share that with our employees, 50/50, where we pay 50%, they pay 50%. For that, I just wanted to point out that that is an increase for our expenses. By us now going to, doing that and going a full year, that's going to be an increase of $146,002. That's going to impact the local budget. That's before we even start. There are some other pieces of that tax that we cover in some other funds that we have, additional $15,000. That does not go to the local budget. So our increase is going to be, over last year, is going to be $60,776. And I put that down as unfunded, right? That's something that we just have to be able to start with. Also, there is another law recently passed that also increased the pay for ed techs. And we call that the ed tech minimum wage law. And so that was something that did also impact us in this budget. And that also impacts us for an additional expense of $155,338. Okay? So there's something else that is, another one that's unfunded that these are some of the things that we're starting with before we even get going. As you know, and as I'll mention in the, through this, is that our health insurance, well, I will say that a big part of our budget is staff, staffing. And a big part of our budget is salary and benefits. And one of the benefits that's included in that is health insurance. And so health insurance for us is going to be a real big impact in this budget. You'll notice that the numbers that we've built this budget on have a 17.5% increase for the Harvard Pilgrim Health Insurance, which covers the majority of our employees. We do have our administrators and our custodians, two smaller of our bargaining units, they are covered by Anthem. And so Anthem's increase that we've estimated in this budget is 11.5% of an increase. So when you put those increases together, for the Harvard Health Insurance, that increase of 17.5, that's going to be the tune of $1,335,190. Okay? When you look at the Anthem increase of 11.5%, that's going to impact us for $116,599. That's massive. We knew that what is driving those is mainly high claims. We did have a school committee workshop earlier this month, and we had our representatives from Acadia Benefits come to do a presentation for us more in-depth in terms of what we're looking at for insurance. The concern that we have right now is that 17.5% placeholder for Harvard Pilgrim and that 11.5% placeholder for Anthem, there's a concern with how we're trending and how our numbers are going, that that is going to be not enough. So I've, we've got a slide later in the presentation that will get into health insurance a little more deeper. Main state retirement, for those who are, we classify as non-teachers, that percentage increased went from 9.9 to 10.2. So that impacts us $8,442. The main state retirement for teachers went down from 4.47% to 4.36, so that actually helped us with the savings of $25,520. So those are some challenge, those things, just to kind of set the stage for you as we get right into the budget. To start things off, our expenses have increased in this budget by 7.8%. Or when you look at that, it's $5,66,414. One thing there that I think is important for us is, I'm also going to include what the turn the page number is. Because when we talked about putting this budget together, in some ways, in some ways, it was easy to put forward because we're not asking for, there's here things that aren't a lot of wants here. These are basically coming at a budget where we feel we're already pretty much at bare bones. And we're looking to try to maintain and keep what we have. There's going to be a couple new items that are in the budget that I will be talking about when we get to those particular articles. Our turn the page, just to look at this current budget and then turn it over to 2025-26, still is an increase of 6.8%. Almost four and a half million dollars. Those numbers are big. We recognize that. That's not something that we take for granted. But I do want to point out, what you see also in this slide is the total per pupil in terms of your per pupil expense by, and we've got 24 schools here through Cumberland County and York County for that. And so when you look at what we've done here, okay? We do this where, in order for us to get that per pupil cost, okay? This is comparing apples to apples. We pull out what would be any construct, debt service, right? Through the debt service that we have, thank you, that is through our construction. Those are just a pass-through for us. Those are state projects that, as they come through, we get, here's our expense, here's our, here's our revenue with that. It offsets, it looks like it inflates our budget. The other thing is, and Sanford is part of this budget, we have Sanford Regional Technical Center. Not all schools do. When we separate the CTE out and we separate debt service, you're now going to look at apples to apples. And when you do that, you can see there, out of the 24 schools, Sanford ranks 24th out of 24th, looking at that. That graph, as you look at it, there, on the page, red to the far right is Sanford. That green, that green one is the state average. And then the blue one is the local average of all of those 24 schools that are listed there through Cumberland County and York County. Okay? So when we look at that, want people to know where we rank on our per pupil cost, that this is not a budget that is coming back, that is wild or out of control or asking for things.
Can I just ask you, RSU 23, who is that?
Old Orchard.
Old Orchard Beach.
Oh, B, RSU 51.
That is Cumberland? Can you go to the next screen?
And RSU 35?
Marshwood. So next on the screen here, we've taken that graph, and this is what, you pull it right out, okay? And there it is, in a different format, that also breaks it out by the different articles that we're going to get into in greater detail. But you can see it right there in terms of that. And we've mentioned this in the past. That is something that, this is not new information, but I do think it's important for us to be able to highlight that, to make sure we're putting things into context here for us in terms of budgets going forward.
I have a quick question. Is this prior to subsidy, after?
Prior.
Okay, this is before. This is just expense with no, okay.
Yep, this is just on the expense side. I know tonight, there's going to be, in some ways, a lot thrown at you. So I expect that there's going to be a little bit of overwhelming, that you're going to have to take some time to be able to get your arms around. So we understand that. So if there are questions that come up, please don't hesitate, or there may be questions come up later that we want to get into a little bit deeper. But there's your per pupil costs without the debt and SRTC. All right, if we go to the next one, there's, we wanted to put this cost up there because I also think that this is also pretty telling. So I might need Cheryl to help me explain this in a way. But if you're going to be able to kind of put Sanford into those other schools, what they had for per pupil costs, if we were able to inject their numbers with ours, what you see here is what the additional monies would be that would come to our budget. Do I have that right, Cheryl? In terms of?
You did pretty good.
Okay, so if you look at, all right, we'll take Sanford, we'll plug ourselves into the per pupil cost for those other districts, you would then see how much additional money, where's that gap between what our money, what our expenses are and what it would be?
So for example, if you look at, Bitford is the next closest to us in their per pupil cost, they have an additional spending of $5 million compared to ours, if they were, you know, to use the same expenses that they use for our current enrollment.
So just to, I'm crystal clear in the millions that are watching this. So when you, when we say that, right? Because it's not an award to say that we have the, you know what I mean? Our, I'm not sure what I'm trying to say, but you know what I'm saying? Per pupil cost, thank you. That their, their cities, towns pay more into their school than ours does.
Yes.
When you're looking at these numbers.
More expense, they spend more money on their services than we do.
Okay.
I guess that's where you put.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is what we would get, the difference if we were, if we had gotten that. And you can see it all the way through with that. You'll see where the state's total is in green. You'll see in the middle of that, the local average is in the light blue. And then you'll also, Sanford is way to the right in terms of that. But that's something else that I think we break down, that I want, you know, when people want to come back in and look at it to say, oh, our taxes are too high. And I understand they're high, and they want to come back and be able to say that the education is a big part of that, and we understand that. But at the same time, I want us to be able to look at comparison between what we're, how we measure up and also what we're getting for services.
So Cheryl, just for, again, just to reiterate on this a little bit. If we took our local average, because my numbers are missing on this margin right here a little bit. So if we just spent the local average, what's the difference in what we're spending? I see that our per pupil cost is 5,181, and the local average is 8,198. So if we spent 8,198 per pupil that we have, what's this number that I?
So that would be, and that was for the local average one?
Yeah, blue, yeah.
It's about 15 million.
So we'd be spending 15 million more dollars if we spent the average per pupil. Okay, thank you.
Okay. One question. So our per pupil cost is lean. Like, it's the leanest in this county, two counties, right? But, but the effort to even get to that cost in our community is the problem, right? So our ability of the tax base to support even that lean cost is the issue.
Yeah, and I'm glad, thank you for pointing that out because at the end of the day, I think if you would look at our citizens, our community, they support education. They do. I think everyone here does, our city council does. But I think you're looking at the challenge that's in front of us in terms of that for. Okay, so the next one, all right, where's, you see all the expenses. Let's break that down. Where is our money spent? Okay? And so these are the expenses. Remember, this is pulling out the debt that's paid by the state debt service. Because remember, that's a pass-through. We get, we get offsetting revenue for that. So as you look at it, so that breaks us down into the different categories. The biggest one, 77%, is salary and benefits, okay? The next one after that, we have purchased, well, purchased services. A lot of our special education pieces come, fall under that. That's at 4%. Our supplies are also at 4%. What's our capital? Transportation is 5%. Our property maintenance and repair is at 1%. Our debt is at 3%. And our capital is at 1%. Okay, so, and I want to point out, in those purchased services, we also, there's also staff that falls under those. Like, for example, our transportation, right? With that, our bus drivers, our van drivers, our monitors. Also in special education with some of the purchase services we have with some of our OT and PT and speech services. Okay, so when you're putting that together, you're seeing exactly what we have for a budget and how lean we are in those areas in terms of how it breaks out. Okay? Anything to add into those? We'll, we'll come back to that a little bit later, but that is, as you look at it. All right, let's jump into this, okay? We'll go by article. We do this, we break this out because this is what we've done in the past. And this is also ultimately how it is presented to the voters in June as well. The first article and the biggest article is regular instruction. Regular instruction falls under that. That is really when you're looking at our staff, our teaching, the majority of our staff. This is where you'll come back and fall, you'll see our teachers fall under this one. All right? So this is up from last year, 9%, $1,666,230. The turn the page portion, if we were to use what we currently have and just turn the page into next year, that is 8.5% or 1 point, over 1.5 million. The difference there is that we do have one added position here. There's one added position that falls into this article, and that is an additional multilingual learner teacher. And then when you look at salary and benefits for that, it comes almost just under $97,000. We know that our multilingual language, multilingual learner population is increasing. It has been increasing. We've been doing our best to be able to keep up to that. I know at next Monday night's school committee, we've got a more in-depth presentation to be able to look at that increase. But we feel that when you look at the increase in the numbers, that this is justified. I think what you'll also see is when you see our revenue that comes in through our EPS, you're also going to see increased revenue in this area to be able to come back to address this need. Okay? When you look at our regular instruction, when you break down Article 1 down below, okay? When it comes to that, we're 24 out of 24, okay? Another big part of this budget, in addition to the staffing, is our supplies, okay? We really tried to maintain to keep the supplies that we've always had. You can see that costs have gone up. One of the ones that really impacted us was paper. Paper is one that has also, cost has gone up to the point where that also is having an impact on our budget, okay? In this one, that can also account for a lot of shifts. We've also got the health insurance in here, for those at Harvard Pilgrim that fall under this article, and a 17.5% increase, which is significant. What also can impact our budget is when our employees change their health insurance plans. So you'll have some that might be, all of a sudden, on someone else's health insurance. And then they're going to be taking health insurance through the school. That could be a single, but it also could then be to adults, if they're now getting married. It also could be an adult with children, and it also could be a full family. When those shifts change, because obviously those plans cost more for a family, but that's where you can also see some of these shifts. I will also say in this budget, you're not looking at Article 1 that has a bunch of wish lists. These are things that we were coming back in to look at. As I mentioned, this is us trying to maintain what we have. There's some things that, when you look at things, we don't have some of the other resources or positions that surrounding or other school districts do, right? You probably hear, middle schools will have world language taught at middle schools. We don't have world languages taught in Sanford. You'll see there'll be a lot of interventionist positions academically. That's something that we don't have. You'll see some others have other allied arts positions. That's something else that we don't have, okay? You also know that our school committee, a while back, gave their blessing and approval to our marching band to go on a trip down to Philadelphia coming up for, in the summer, the July 4th Independence. Great opportunity for our, for our marching band and for our participants. There were some costs that were in this budget at one point that the schools would pick up. Those have been removed because at the same time, that's nice, that's an extra, but that'll be something that will go into fundraising. We also have pre-K and K for me, that we moved into the supplies for those. Those also got moved into this article too, this Article 1. So when you look at that, that's where you're seeing where that increased. The major part of that increase would be that added MLLL teacher. And for the increase, you're also going to see where that is. And you can see down below how we rank out, you know, how Article 1, when you compare us to the other 24 schools, in York and Cumberland County.
I'm sorry that I keep asking these questions, but it's, so RSU 57, is that Massey-Bsec?
Yep.
RSU 60, is that Noble?
Yes.
And the one above Bitford is RSU 06, that's Kenny Monk?
Bonnie Eagle.
And RSU 14?
Wyndham.
Wyndham, thank you.
Okay, so there, as you look into it, that's Article 1, okay?
One thing for that, also, just this MLL teacher that's needed, that is part of the 1% difference here of your, because we have a 1% increase that's not a turn the page. So this, this is part of that. It's about 637,000, so this is almost 100,000 of that right there.
Yes.
It's a big part of that, yes.
A big, huge part. Okay, thank you.
But also the things that I identified other, right? Supplies, when you start looking at paper and the pre-K and K for me being moved in as well.
Yeah, when you look at supplies, I mean, before COVID, a case of paper was $23, and now it's $38 to $42 a case. That's a huge difference. And we use a lot.
Okay, let's go to Article 2. That's special education. That is a big part of our budget. I think you're looking at somewhere 24-25% of our population are identified as special education. This increase is 16.4% or over $2 million. The turn the page portion of this article has increased by 14.4%. And that is 1.7, over 1.7 million dollars. Now, as you look at that, there is a couple of new positions in this budget on the special ed article that were not in other budget, not done previously. The first one is, we have added an assistant special ed director for salary and benefits for a total of $155,197. That's something that we know as what is currently in front of us, but we also know what's coming down the pike, that we're also looking at eventually, in the next couple of years, we're going to have to take on the programming from CDS for our three and four-year-olds. And we also know that we've also taken on some responsibilities for 18-22-year-olds. And the special ed advisory committee working on that, we feel that this is something that we wanted to include in this budget. We think it's justified when you start looking at the different responsibilities that we have. We also have added an interpreter into this budget. That was something that we had to cover this year in terms of, that wasn't anticipated. And that's a cost of $88,522. When you also start talking about special education, one of those big costs for us is always the outside placement costs. There's tuition. We know that those tuition for outside placements have increased drastically. In terms of that, there's been a change in that law that they can now bill for the enrolled days that our students have, not the days that they are in attendance. These are all the days that they could be in attendance. That was a change, and so that's impacted our budget. And so when you look at that, that increase is $216,136, okay? We did move some curriculum costs or some curriculum pieces out of the curriculum budget into special education. That's done because these are special education curriculum, but it's also being done strategically because that would allow us to get funded by the state for that. That model is two years in arrears, but nonetheless, that is also a wise thing for us to be able to do, okay? This is an area where I could say... This is an area where I could say for all of our, for all of our positions in Sanford, special ed especially, we know that there's been some previous cuts that have had, that have happened and this is where you can sometimes see that this is where the impact is being felt, especially in this area. The expectations that we have, they're not decreasing. Okay? The expectations are increasing for us to be able to make sure that we're in compliance and that we're in law. I think the school committee is aware that we've also had some situations where there's been an increase to some of our due process hearings that have happened and some of our legal situations. We have, I'm proud to say, you know, been victorious and worked in those situations by doing what's right and what's right by kids and what's right by the law, but that comes at a cost with that. So as you can look at that down below, when you see how we rank here in special education, we do rank fourteen out of the twenty-four. We are slightly, are we at the same as the state average or maybe a little bit higher?
Slightly higher.
Slightly higher than the state average. Cheryl says by twenty dollars. All right. And then when you look at, when you look at the local averages for the, for York and Cumberland County, we are below where that is in what we're paying for special education for.
Can I just make a point and just a question? So we are twenty dollars over the, or not over, but more than what the state average is for special ed, but would that be because of just the, I don't want to say the volume, but just the amount of students or no? Because it's per pupil, right?
Yeah.
Just whether it be higher needs, would that be appropriate to say or no?
I think some of it could be. We have bridge, but I don't know how much that would actually increase it.
Okay.
Those, because a lot of people could be sending those outside.
I just think about out placements, outside and all that.
So.
Because if we're spending more, but we have more out of district placements, right? That would make sense why we would have a higher per pupil cost.
Yes.
If we have a lot more students and I would assume we do.
On a percentage basis.
Then when I'm looking at some of these smaller districts, right?
Could be.
Okay.
Is this a per pupil cost or just total expense line?
Pupil.
Per pupil. Oh, okay.
So you're going to see the theme we used all the way through is per pupil cost.
Right. And just to be clear, you had mentioned about some of the special ed legal sort of fees that we've had. That also would go into the per pupil cost, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that's significant as well.
Yeah, they have, we have legal fees under special ed that are specific.
Right, so that could really jump us a high where, which is why we're looking at where we are. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so there's Article Two in special education. We can now move over to Article Three. That is career and technical education. That is Sanford Regional Technical Center. And so when you look at the SRTC budget, that is increased by twelve point six percent or five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. When you look at that, the turn the page of Article Three has actually only increased by seven percent, just over three hundred thousand. So there's a big difference there. Why is that? Well, we've got a couple new programs that we're adding that are coming onboard for next fall. We're going to look to have a sports medicine program and we're also looking at a baking and pastry program. So when you look at that, you're going to see that there's a cost to go with that. The teaching position, supplies and equipment. So for the sports medicine, that comes out to one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two. The baking and pastry comes out to one hundred and nineteen thousand and eighty-two. Okay? I do want to point out that a change that the state has done is you now, when you're starting those new programs, you're going to be getting upfront costs to help you start those programs. So on Monday night, when we go to our revenue, you're going to see that there is increased revenue that are going towards those new programs for sports medicine, baking and pastry. The old way of doing things was you were only going to get caught up for those, for those costs and a two years in arrears. And that was never something where local people, local could be able to take that on. So that's been a change in the state that's allowing us to be able, okay, you can start these programs, but you can also have the revenue to go around to help you be able to do that. Okay? Now, also in this budget, I can tell you, we're very proud of Sanford Regional Technical Center. We're very proud of the Sanford School Department, but when you look at the Sanford Regional Technical Center, you'll see that we have increased numbers, record numbers in terms of people who are accessing that program. So anytime you have that, you're also going to get increased, when there's increased students in these increased programs, there's also increased responsibility. So you can see there that rather than adding an administrative assistant, trying to be creative to have a stipend, an additional stipend for an administrative assistant, and that's really focused into, now you're coming back into adding into programs, adding in more reporting, more state, the grant, all the record keeping and the things that have to come back to be able to do that. You also know that for the administrators, for both the director and the assistant director, now they've got more students that they're responsible for in terms of doing that. Okay? So there's another part where you're looking at in addition to the budget. We did make a change. We do have a project manager and for a number of our trades, these are mostly those that are very much interacting with the public, right? These are some things that we can't ask our instructors and our teachers to do. We need someone who's really going to be that person to do that. And so we do have a project manager who really works for all of our trades, especially with some of the live work situations that happen. But a big part of that is looking at our building trades where we're building houses and we're doing that in collaboration with the main builders and we're also doing that in collaboration with Kiwanis. And so as we're doing that, we know that there's building trades, our electrical program, our electrical wiring program, our plumbing program, landscaping and horticulture. Those are programs that are working directly in those. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to move seventeen percent. And when you look at those trades, it's about seventeen percent of the overall, moving that also into that area for a savings of just under ten thousand dollars. Okay? I mentioned the additional revenue for those two programs. We are expecting to receive just under three hundred thousand dollars for those two new programs with that. We also have a career exploratory as a class. That's not going to be something that's going to be impacting us in hiring existing staff. That's more about us doing some changes internally to also take advantage of the resources and the formula with that. Those of you who were part of last year's budget will also know, we made a significant change last year when it came to Article Three. What we had always done in the past was, there's a capital budget that's included that we used to have all of our sending schools would contribute to the sending, to that capital budget and they would do it on a per pupil basis, based on how many pupils they had. They divide up that cost by the other sending schools. Sanford, we wouldn't be part of that because we were handling just the organization, the administration of SRTC. And it seemed to work out. Well, what's happened over time, especially where we are located in Southern Maine and York County, we were seeing those costs that for us to administrate and run the program and to run SRTC, we're not keeping up with state funding. There was a gap and that gap was growing significantly, that we were taking that on for our taxpayers. We worked hard with our sending schools to revisit that formula so that now that doesn't fall onto just Sanford, it would fall onto all of our schools based on the number of students that they're sending in the program. Okay? So I want to point that out, that that was something that we did make a change last year that was very beneficial to our budget. It was something that shifting some of those expenses that we were bearing onto sharing them with all of the sending schools.
Right, so that was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand additional revenue we got last year in our special ed budget.
Any questions on SRTC Article Three? Okay, we'll move ahead to Article Four. This is Article Four, Other Instruction. This is really where athletics lives, okay, in terms of that. Our turn the page article for athletics increased five point six percent, just over seventy thousand dollars. In this budget, we do have an actual increase of nine point nine percent or just under a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay? So how does that break down? There are some new items that are currently in this budget. We have an athletic trainer currently. We're looking to expand those hours, an additional ten hours. That could also collude some of our middle school programming and some of the other gaps that we have. That would be a cost of eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. The other thing that's in here is you'll notice there's swim co-op and ice hockey co-op. Currently, those are programs, athletic programs that we do not offer at Sanford High School. We usually will come back and work on those in collaboration, right? Our kids will travel. I think for our hockey team, that is usually going with Marshwood. I think there's a couple other schools in the same boat as us, but Marshwood is the host school of athletics, of ice hockey. And then for our swim program, those, if you remember, our numbers had really decreased and so as we were looking at adding volleyball, we then did make a cut for our swim program based on numbers. Now, we've still had some kids who are interested in swimming and some interested in hockey and if so, they can then be able to be part of the co-op with those other schools. Well, as it stands right now, there's nothing that we've done in our budget that's been able to have any of those costs that come back, but there are costs for those people. For example, for ice hockey, one of the major costs in that program is ice time that people have to pay. So our people who are part of a co-op right now are contributing towards the ice time. Swimming, it's not ice time, it's pool time. And so we also know that right now, we have people who are interested in that, who are paying that money to be able to go. I know for the ice hockey, it's, I think it's around seven, eight hundred dollars, okay, per student that would come back to do that. Swimming, it's up over five hundred dollars, I think. Okay? And that's something that's not set by us, but that's something that is set by those, a host of the co-op. And so we've had that where we did look at, we don't have enough numbers for ice hockey. Swimming is one where it's a little bit, it's hard to gauge in that, but we did put money in there of six thousand dollars from a consistent for swim and then consistency for four thousand, that that would be money that this budget would be able to go towards that to help break down some of those costs of those families. Okay? So that is included in this budget. There's also some one-time costs in here currently. We have some cheering mats. Okay, those are a cost of eleven thousand dollars. And then over at Sanford Middle School, right now we have the baskets when they have to, on the side, the basketball hoops, when they have to be brought up. They're being brought up where they're being cranked up with that. That's outdated and archaic and so there is a key system to be able to come back and be able to do that quicker and easier and at its core, safer. That has a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay, that's currently in the budget right now. You'll see as you go down, how do we measure up when it comes to Article Four with the other twenty-four sending schools? In this one, we're twentieth out of twenty-four. You'll see the state total there in green and then you can also see the local averages in light blue. Now, there are some things not included in this budget. There was some new equipment that was asked, eighteen thousand, five hundred. That's been removed because we feel that those could be some requests or some asks of our red and white foundation or the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation. In the past, both of those groups have been very helpful and supportive in being able to do those. We also know that we'd included positions in this budget before when it came to some of our first teams at Sanford High School. I think we're comfortable removing those from this budget in the following areas. Girls' basketball, first team softball, first team field hockey and first team girls' lacrosse. We have not had the numbers that have been coming back up. We always like to think we do to hold that out in that event, but right now it hasn't for a number of years and we're also feeling that by keeping that in that budget, it's not needed. And then there's also the idea of an assistant athletic director. This was something that we did include last year for that. One of the things that we were tying into this assistant athletic director position was, if you remember, there was some fields work, there's some mowing responsibilities that the city had for us. They had some challenges in that position to be able to fill it. They handed it over to us. And so we've taken that on. It hasn't been easy. It's not something that either for us, we've encountered similar challenges that the city has in terms of filling that position. But if we were looking at an assistant athletic director position, there would be some other things currently in this budget that would go away because that position would be able to take on those responsibilities. Okay? If we look at it, still when you're looking at that position, it saves money, but it still would be a net increase of sixty-two thousand, eighty-five dollars. Okay? So that's something that, I don't know if that's a future thing we want to dig into a little bit deeper and look at. I know when I was working with Athletic Director Zach Lumlin, Zach had mentioned as that was presented last year, it felt like a big part of that was the mowing piece. And that is, that's a component of it, but there's also more to it also with that. And I know that's something when we went through the athletic budget with Zach, line by line, that was something. But that is not something that is currently, that position is not in this budget as it stands. Yeah, if, just to give some more context to that, that full assistant athletic director position cost would be eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, but we would have deductions of over twenty-six thousand dollars by removing the grounds and some of the other stipends that are in there. So that leaves a net impact of sixty-two thousand with that. A lot of what we did in this budget was try to focus on the needs and the equipment needs in keeping that for it. Any questions on Article Four? Okay? Article Five, this is our student-staff support. This is where counselors, nursing, library, our curriculum budget, our technology budget, they all fall into Article Five. This is increased by two point seven percent or a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. That's the same as turn the page. Okay? So really there's, as I mentioned before, we did have some things that were asked for. These fell under more of the wants than I think the needs. There's two hundred and nine thousand dollars, new equipment requests. Much of that was for cameras and copiers. Not that there's not a need for it, we're looking for some, maybe some more creative ways that we might be able to cover that through some other grants or other pieces. And then there's also areas when there's some repairs in this for technology, primarily that we're also using, removing fifty thousand of that from some other funding, in other funding places for the repairs. Okay? If you look at how we match up in Article Five, we're twenty-two out of twenty-four on a per pupil cost with that, that we are still well below the local averages of Cumberland, York County and well below the state total as well. We do have, in here for a link, we do have our five-year curriculum plan and a five-year technology plan. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done in these areas. Our curriculum director, Bethany Lambert, has done a really good job of being planful and Carrie Hansen on the technology side has been planful because what we're trying to do here is stay away from those spikes that happen in these areas of the budget and try to be looking at a five-year plan so that you can manage what those increases are. And that means, okay, we want to make sure, how can we balance out what our curriculum needs are? We also, how can we balance out our technology needs, our repairing, replacing of technology? Because- Because we are fortunate in Sanford by the work that we've done for many years, going back to Joan Wright, really allowing us to really be maximizing all of the revenue resources for us so that we can be one-to-one in our district to be able to do that. And do that in a way that is allowing us to replace in a very thoughtful manner with that. Beth, you're out there, if you mind, do you mind clicking on the curriculum plan? And we can kind of show you here what we're kind of talking about. You see how there's the current 24-25 budget that we're in? Then you can also see the 25-26, 26-27, 27-28. And what you can see is, we've got that planned out for us to be able to go through that and look at what it's going to look like a few years out to manage that.
These are also in your book, the last few tabs.
Yep, we have...
You'll see the five-year plans.
The five-year plans are in the book. Yep, thank you, Cheryl.
Because I know Melissa likes to make notes.
Yep, and the other piece to that is, I think, to boil it down, when you look at our curriculum budget, it comes down to $110 per student. And that really looks at getting to our core programming, pre-K through 12. That also includes our multilingual learners and also includes SEL as well, which is a low number. So, I don't know, Beth, is there's anything that you want to be able to highlight to kind of walk through, just to, you know, demonstrate how we're trying to be thoughtful and planful when it comes to maximizing what we've got for resources?
Beth, do you want to highlight how you do your, the software stuff? I think that's important.
So, as we look at a lot of the programming now, books are sort of a thing of the past. When you're looking at math textbooks, science textbooks, things like that, everything's gone digital. They're on platforms. So, books were nice because you could buy them and they last for five, six years. Most of these licenses are year-long licenses. But since I've come on, my predecessor started this process, but if you're able to purchase six years at a time versus one year at a time, you almost get two years for free. So, for all of our platforms, I'm able to do that, which actually saves the district quite a bit of money. And as I go through, I have revolving renewals. This past, this school year, 24-25, I had to renew the math licenses for the middle school. I have nothing coming up next year for big ones. The following year, the high school math will be due. And then, two years after that, the elementary math will be due. So, I try to offset the years so that, it is a large spike, it's about $125,000 minimum. So, that way, as long as they're offset, as well as with the literacy and the other pieces of online curriculum, it keeps it fairly level. So, we don't have these really large spikes because all of a sudden, I'm spending half a million dollars to outfit everybody the same year in math. So, that's something we've worked really hard on. I've even pulled it out to a 10-year one as we went to our new literacy platform, just to make sure that nothing overlapped as we went through, to try to help keep it as consistent as possible.
Yeah, as I said, good job, Beth. That's something to be able to help us. And then, when you look at, when you're looking at our overall budget and then what we actually speak, spend on curriculum, right? Teaching and learning, you look at that and it's sometimes a little bit hard to swallow in terms of that. But we're, we want people to know that's being done thoughtfully and planfully to the best that we can be able to do. We also do the same thing in technology. So, if we could bring up the technology one, I'll ask Cheryl, if you're comfortable, at least kind of walking through, showing how a similar process is used so that we are not continuously having the spikes for that.
Can you click on the Software Services tab first? So, of course, software is a huge expense for us, over $125,000 a year for all the platforms that we use and things that keep our computers safe. So, these are all the ones that IT is responsible for. So, they're more responsible for items that are keeping our systems running behind the scenes. The, I always say, it's this, this device is what they're responsible for and the wires and everything behind the wall and all the servers. And so, we have thoughtfully done this to make sure that we don't have anything major coming with another thing that's major at the same time. You do see there's a few lines that have zero that are stuff that will probably happen in the future. Right now, we're getting it through other funding, but it could be something that could be a cost in the future. So, we do $125,000 worth of software and security-related items for our IT department.
So, I think, you know, if you look at that pink, right? The total, you can see how a lot of that is planned out for future years. There's a slight increase there, but you're not going to see the massive spikes that could hit it.
Right. So, then, when you flip over to the other hardware one, you're going to see the number for the software again down below, but it breaks down all the different components. And so, these are all your hardware-related items that they're responsible for. So, you know, a good example is all our Chromebooks, all of our MacBooks, iPads, all of that is, has a replacement and we try to make it so we don't have a huge bump in cost. Another big item that is a cost for us is Promethean boards. So, Promethean boards are in all of our classrooms and we actually have them, I think, this year, starting this year, in every classroom now. But some of them in the high school are starting to fail because they've been there since 2018. So, now, we're starting to find some of those are failing. And so, what they're doing is, depending on the type of classroom it is, sometimes we're replacing it with a TV, a high-definition TV, because we're finding if they're not using the touch technology and using that piece. And for certain items, it's just too hard for them to do that for, or it's just not a need. So, we've moved away from that on certain, for certain classrooms because it just doesn't make sense to, it's either $1,500 or $3,500. And so, if you can save $2,000, we might as well do it. So, but that's done very thoughtfully and it's not forced upon anybody unless we feel that it's definitely not a need. So, you'll, throughout all of this is also pieces that are repairs for broken devices and stuff like that. So, you're going to see move to other funding in certain categories, that we have some additional funding that is left over from previous items that we're going to utilize to bring this budget down slightly. But you can see, we have a lot of cabling and repairs and copiers. Copier's a big expense for us, $31,000 a year. We try to replace anywhere between four and five devices a year so that we don't have to go out and buy a huge amount of copiers like we did, I believe, four years ago to try to get caught up. So, this is what our plan to make sure that we kind of stabilize it and do some every year. So, then, as you kind of scroll down, you'll see, here's where your software comes over from the other tab. So, you see that $128,000 for that. And then, E-Rate is a program that we use to do some of our big projects. And you always have to put some money, costs come from local. So, we put $30,000 in every year to help do the local portion of an E-Rate project. And so, as you can see at the bottom, this 399, 463 is what is in the budget right now under local funding. MLTI, we actually, is another funding source where we get iPads and MacBooks and Chromebooks. And so, that is something that happens every year. We hope it continues, but it helps us keep our devices new and continued, so. And then, we have another one that's got some more repairs, that's the repair line. And then, you see the new equipment, that $219,500, $219,500 that we actually had taken out and replaced that through another program. We're going to look for COPs grant or something for those.
Thank you, Cheryl. So, once again, trying to break that down a little bit to show you that it's done with some planning and some thoughtful purposes in terms of that. Any questions on technology or Article Five in general? Student and Staff Support.
Just that, I know sometimes you are trying to put technology all together. That is all in Article Five?
Yes.
And everything Beth was talking about is all in Article Five?
Yep.
Okay, because, you know, you're trying to get the total number of technologies, some, you might, you know, put some in somewhere.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Article Six. That System Admin. That Central Office. That School Committee. That has an increase of 4.4 percent, $50,473. The Turn the Page for that is 4.4 percent as you look at that. So, Status Quo, if you look down below, you'll see that Sanford ranks 24th out of 24th when it comes to System Admin. And when you break that article down for that, and that, you can see the green is the state total. And then, above that would be the local averages for the 24 schools in York County and Cumberland County. Article Seven, that's our School Administration. That's the School Administrators with that. That's increased 5.9 percent, $164,198. And that's the same as the Turn the Page with that. In this one, we are ranking 16 out of 24, but we are still below the local average as well as the state total in that area for our School Administration doing that. Article Eight, Transportation. As you know, we do not own our own buses. This is a contracted service that we have. This is a contract that we signed last year. We are currently in the first year of that agreement. This is, next year will be the second year of that agreement. It's already negotiated. So, you're going to see that the Turn the Page part of that is 8.6 percent, $219,901 when it comes to that. That's the, that includes the 5 percent rate increase, but there's also going to be some increased costs in there, both for homeless, transportation utilization, as well as special education for that. We break that article down, per pupil, we come in 20 out of 24. And you can see where the local averages are. And then, you can see also the state average, and this particular article is higher. Article Nine is our Facilities and Maintenance. That has increased 4.7 percent. That's the same as Turn the Page, just under $300,000 for our facilities and maintenance with that. You can also see down below, we rank 16 out of 24 for that one. We're still below the state average and we're still below local average. One thing that I want to point out here in Facilities and Maintenance, okay? This does not include any reserves for future costs of high school replacement, okay? We were very fortunate, we moved into a brand-new Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center back in 2018. Wonderful facility, beautiful facility, shining star. But it's important to point out that we do not have anything in here for any of our replacements. And what you see happening since we've been there in 2018 is you're going to see that things are going to start breaking down. And I know that as we were looking through, when they were doing the plans for the school, there was a recommendation to make sure that you were setting aside money each year so that when these things came due, it wasn't going to be, wow, we're going to get hit all at once for that. We have been setting aside $20,000, but that has been primarily set aside for the, looking ahead to the turf field that we have, knowing that the turf field has a, has a life. It has an expected life where it's going to have to be replaced. And that would be something that you know is going to be a major hit when it comes to a budget for that. The City Charger, the City Charter, right? That works, says that City Council has to put 4 percent of the expenses into their budget. And that was some forward thinking to say, all right, let's be able to do that. Out of that 4 percent here for the height, for the school budget, we only get about $400,000 of that. And what you see, this budget and capital is built on that, that we're doing a nice job of being able to do our best. We're fortunate because we've had some great building projects in our, in our city to be able to do that. But what we haven't done is be able to prepare for some of those things that may be coming due to break down with that, especially with some of our aging buildings, okay? Jason Dudley, our Director of Facilities Maintenance, has done a good job with his budget of trying to be able to, same thing. There's a five-year plan that he has planned out so that he's updating and rotating to be able to come back to really keep that money, to kind of maximize it so that it meets that life cycle. Where it doesn't is really for that High School and Technical Center. And that's something that worries me that down the line, we're going to be concerned. We really don't have any contingency. This is a lean budget without any contingency for possible breakdowns that could be happening. Also, it does not include, remember, we replaced the boiler over at Willard School, Sanford Community Adult Education, the bridge. We also had an opportunity to have a second boiler there. And that was something that is not included in this budget. Because under those circumstances, we'd love to have it, but it's not included as you look at where that is. The priorities that Jason identified in this budget, obviously, we're looking at safety. Safety drives everything. Wood chips for our playgrounds, that's been an area right now that has needed something to be able to get some attention. HVAC at Sanford Middle School, we have some areas there, that HVAC system that's failing that we need to address. And then, we also have a rooftop unit at Sanford Pride Elementary. Those are really the priorities that Jason has built into these budgets for that. We did have some savings in this budget on some energy-efficient bonds that had come due, where that was a savings of $150,000. We also, in this budget, is where we're carrying the cost for Lafayette. If you know Lafayette is something right now that we've looked at to be able to get back to the city. That was something that was happening after the budget had already been passed. Last year, we went and used Lafayette School in collaboration with the city to put the warming shelter there. That was something that was not going to be able to be continued right now. So, right now, we are working with the city, looking at possible uses for Lafayette School. We've had the United Way come in there to look at an incubator for some daycare pieces. And we're also knowing that down the line, if some space is needed, especially if we're looking at for some collaboration around some special programming for those costs with that, okay? But right now, to be able to just hold on to that asset for us is about $45,000 a year. And this year, we're not going to be, right now, as it stands, is no revenue that is, would be able to be coming in for that, okay? So, that's our Facilities and Maintenance budget for that. Cheryl, anything you want to add?
Looks like Donna can answer questions.
Yeah, so, on that, Facilities and Maintenance, like when, safety, everything, are there costs coming down the road that we know that like are going to be big ones, like in two years? Because where the high school was built in 2018, it's hard to stagger it like you're doing with the curriculum and technology. Or do we know, like, and I'm just going to sound simple, but like all the light bulbs are just going to start to go out in 10 years from your start date? Because everything's brand-new, right? And I do, I know a school board member in Mount Blue, and they, they also built a new high school. And so, that's one of those things that they, they don't, that you don't, it's a cost that you, that comes unexpectedly, where, you know, you have a new high school and then all of a sudden, things start to wear out at the same time.
So, for example, faucets are wearing out at the high school, like in multiples at a time. And those are very expensive faucets. And so, we've actually gone away from the no-touch because they're so expensive that we just couldn't justify doing that, went back to the normal ones that seem to last longer. And so, that's an example of, I mean, faucets, I saw Beth over there saying yes because she lives there probably every day. You go in and all of a sudden, it doesn't work. So, yeah, so, we're starting to see that. I mean, so, things are coming.
And that's what I had mentioned, we hadn't been putting any money aside for those. And so, those are the things that I think we are getting worried about, that when you look at the budget that we have, it's been built on something that is working for the district. These are some costs that we haven't had to have, but I think down the line, they're going to be coming. And it's going to be impactful for us. going to be coming. And it's going to be impactful for us as you look at that.
Right. And even when you look at the five-year plan, there's not a lot in there for the high school yet for, in our numbers, because we don't know what we don't know.
Correct. Right. So, I, that's something I'm putting on the radar, because that was something, as we come back, that, as I said, without having those, that investment in that, and it's not because people aren't trying to be taking care of our assets. We have limited resources, and what you're doing is usually putting them more in a reactive way.
Correct. I guess, oh, sorry, John. No, go ahead.
And not to, is there anything in, that we're worried about that, because we're being as lean as possible, that, that we're not keeping up with, or that we're potential to, you know, maintenance-wise, things like that, that we're not keeping up with? And I'll use example of the cities with the roads, for example. If you, you know, we're kind of Band-Aid the roads, Band-Aid the roads, and try to hold it together with bits and pieces until it becomes a major problem. Is there anything down the road that you can see like that?
I would say the HVAC at the middle school and the rooftop unit at Pride, those are the things that we're addressing right here that we look at, that those, that's in this budget. That was part of the $400,000 that we've had to be able to operate that, to look around.
And Willard Building, we'll have some costs coming up soon. In '28 and '29, we have costs for Willard. Some items to be fixed, because we know that's coming, because we didn't think we were going to use the building.
And, but as, I will say, when we did move in there, there were some things that we had to invest in.
Yeah, we did about a half a million.
Already.
Of repairs. Yep. But there's some more coming.
Um, when you, when we talk about more, more coming, I think about, you know, the land that we were donated to at Carl Lamb for a second entrance in the future. And I'm assuming that we haven't started sort of saving for that, not knowing if we need to do a bond or whatnot. But that's not something we have budgeted for yet.
Correct.
But know that eventually, we hope to do that, especially because we're so grateful for that donation.
Right. I agree.
Okay. Anything else on facilities and maintenance? All right, move to Article Ten. Good news here, debt service. As I mentioned, this is a pass-through. Over time, you're going to see that this is pieces, but we do have some that are local bonds in terms of that. So, we did decrease this by $191,931 with that.
So, this graph shows you the principal and the interest we pay each year, and the amount that's going to be state-paid each year. So, the red line is what the state pays. So, it just shows that there's very little above that yellow, that red line that we actually pay out of local funding.
Article 11 is all other expenditures, and that is mainly our Sanford Performing Arts Center. WSSR also falls under this. And this is, you're going to say, wow, 21.7 percent, but it's only $25,940. I won't say only, but that's a low number, because really, in essence, what that came down to was a change in an insurance plan. You know, going from a single to a, to a, to a family is what you've got mainly there is a, or not, or coming on to it, I should say.
Coming on to our plan.
Yeah, I don't, it was someone who might not have had insurance with us before in terms of that. So, that's, that's where you're going to see that increase in the majority of that piece. And so, as you know, with that, we also have, when it comes to the Performing Arts Center, that is not something that is 100 percent funded by the school department. We have probably a 40 percent that is hit by the local budget. But you know there are a number of things, Brett does a wonderful job there, in terms of bringing other programming for the community. And so, that is done through an enterprise account where, so the enterprise account is 60 percent, and the local portion is about 40 percent, because we're very fortunate that there's a number of local things that are going on in that Performing Arts Center in terms of that. And then, it's not an article, but Sanford Community Adult Education is separate, and that one is an increase of 8 percent, just over $45,000, just over $46,000. And the turn the page for that increased by...
Say.
Decrease or decrease?
Yeah, they're typo there.
Oh, fits that typo.
Said be increased, yeah, increased by 8 percent with that for our adult education. And once again, for that one, health insurance was the largest part of that added expense. And there were some, some costs in there with the multilingual learner population that they've been able to be working with that have also justified those expenses for that. All right. I did want to come back and show you an enrollment spreadsheet of how we're, obviously, that's something we pay very close attention to. So, if we can bring up that, and I'll hand this over to Steve, if you want to kind of walk people through our enrollment projections.
Sure. If you go to the front of your budget book, there's a big paper in there for you that has the enrollment. As we look at our enrollment, next year's enrollment is anticipated to be down just slightly at this time. If you look at the table, the top table is enrollment as of yesterday across the district, and the bottom table is a projected enrollment, moving those students forward for next year in '25, '26. As we look at the enrollment at the elementary school, we try really hard not to shift kids from school to school. Once they are in an elementary school, we try to keep them there for consistency. I just wanted to mention that. The other piece about the elementary school is some of our classrooms, especially over at MCS, they can only hold 16 students. And so, sometimes you see those elementary numbers. Sometimes there's some discrepancy in terms of class sizes, and that's part of the reason, is because of the class size that we can hold. So, you have the schools across the top. You have the grade levels going down the side. We are anticipating full house for pre-K once again. 32 pre-K kids at CGL, 32 at the YMCA and SRTC. So, we have 16 over the SRTC program, and then 16 over at the YMCA. MCS, we have one pre-K classroom there. That's why that number is 16. And then, 32 pre-K kiddos over at SPE as well. Kindergarten, those are estimated numbers. We've been pretty close to our estimates the past couple of years in kindergarten, but we estimate 18 per class and four classrooms per school for kindergarten. And then, the rest of the chart is just moving those numbers forward. As you look, our class sizes, they have increased from where we were with ESER positions. Those positions have gone away, and our class sizes are back to, pretty close to where they were prior to ESER. The other thing when we look at, in terms of class sizes, we look at, do we need to add positions, or do we need to remove positions? And as we look across the schools, at Carl Lamb next year, we're looking at adding a grade one and adding a grade four position, but we're able to absorb that, because we're going to reduce a grade two position and reduce a grade three position. MCS, we're looking to remove a grade three position, but add a grade four position. And at Pride, the same thing. We're going to reduce a grade three position, but add a grade four position. So, how that is handled is sometimes there are retirements, and so times, sometimes it works out. And then, sometimes people are looking for a different grade level, say, I need, need a change. And so, we change grade levels with that. Moving over to the middle school, middle school, those enrollment numbers are pretty, those class sizes are pretty good. 21 to a high of 24. So, those numbers are pretty, pretty decent. No change in the instructors over there. And you look at the high school, the one place our enrollment is increasing is at the high school. That is a trend that has continued. We're continuing to see that increased enrollment at the high school. And from Acton next year, we're anticipating 31 students from Acton and six students from St. Thomas. So, those numbers have been added in. And with an increased enrollment, when I say that increase, increase of 12 students projected for next year at this time. So, a slight increase there. We do not separate out the class sizes at the high school level, because it's a different beast. You have electives. Students are not in the same room all day, so those are, we don't divvy that out like we do at the elementary level. So, there you have it.
And I'll just, thank you, Steve. I'll just add a couple of things. You'll see over the years that we have really decreased the staff at the high school, in terms of also trying to be able to be as thoughtful as we can around that. And Steve made a good point. You notice that instead of us keeping positions and just adding the position where the enrollment's shifting, we're moving around, you know, all right, if we need something at fourth, we don't need that at third, so we'll just move the third position to the fourth position. You don't see that in a lot of communities. That would be something that they wouldn't, but that here in Sanford, we are, that's the approach that we're taking, because we understand the impact on the budget. We impact the resources for that, that we're going to be as thoughtful as we can to have to be able to move those around.
And the only thing else I want to mention is, the other thing I think we have to be really careful of is new development in town. There's some new development going along in Main Street. And is that going to bring us an increase in enrollment? At the elementary level, our enrollment has been trending downwards, but at the high school, you know, we've been trending upward a little bit. So, I just, with a new development, I think we're just going to keep an eye, not to cut too close to the bone when we look at those class sizes for potential new, new residents.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions on enrollment? Okay, we'll move, we're going to health insurance. I did highlight this earlier in the presentation. You can see the, the health and dental cost to the general fund is $10,364,253. That's just under 15 percent of our budget with that. And so, down below, you can see how our health insurance percentage of increase. Gray is the anthem. Remember, that is our custodians and our administrators, two small units. Everyone else falls under the Harvard Pilgrim. You can see how we had a couple of good years there, and now we are trending the wrong way in terms of that. And then, you can also see health insurance single premiums, what those are coming back, and the increase and the impact and the cost there. It's the largest part in our added expense when you're looking at this budget. And that's, that's hard. We, we do have some reserves that we'll be talking about when it comes to revenue on Monday. We were part of that workshop, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, and the information that we were coming from that was, I don't think there's going to be any saving grace that's going to be coming in with that. It's going to be a significant cost and an impact for our budget. Anything that the school committee wants to add in terms around health insurance or a follow-up from that workshop that we held a couple of weeks ago?
I think that we're not even sure it could go up.
Right.
I mean, so, we haven't had any control over it, so.
Yeah, we've been able to, in the past, when we've put in these numbers, we have been able to negotiate lower. That can be by not going out to bid. That can be through a number of pieces. But those, at the end of the day, it's savings. Our concern now is when you look at our high-cost claims and where those sit and how they're trending, that it's going to be challenging. Now, we do have some potential options to look at. I know that our benefits person, she is looking around, talking to colleagues, looking at the RFP to get that prepared in the event that we want to go out to bid, or if there's also some other things that we might be able to adjust with the plans to also capture some savings. So, I want the public to know that is something that we're working on to try to be able to see if we can lower those costs for it. But that is a major concern here. And when you're looking at it, what is it, Cheryl, is it like $1.6 million when you're looking at our, our budget there? 1.4. Four. That's a big hit. That's a big hit when you're looking at a budget and trying to be able to, some of the things that are beyond your control.
And it also affects us in like the title grants and stuff, because that's additional costs that we have to figure out how to utilize the title grants.
Okay. Next slide. There are some items that were already taken out of this budget, right? There's been some talk about Cobb Stadium and some renovation to be able to go there. That was something that, you know, the $520,000, that was not included in this budget. We did reduce athletic equipment, as I mentioned, 16,800, with the hopes of looking at the red and white or legacy foundation. Those first teams that I all took out of the budget that we feel comfortable doing, just because of where numbers have been. I mentioned that technology and cameras and the copiers, that was, that'd be nice to have, but we can get by without needed. Same thing with the $50,000 worth of repairs to the devices. Back at SRTC, 17 percent of the project manager going to other funding. The Parade and National Conference Association costs, there's some savings there. Counseling software costs there, there was a small savings there, and some reduced equipment costs for Margaret Chase Smith by 1,000. So, I just wanted to be upfront. Those are things that we, at our level, had come back to be able to not include in this budget, to identify those. And then, in summary, there's our budget right now, has increased by 7.8 percent, $5,66,414. That's 1 percent up from, I turned the page, of 6.8 percent of $4,428,754. And you can see once again where we rank in our per pupil cost there. And then, the last, last slide before questions is, where's our money spent? And you can come back to see, as you look at that, that over 80 percent of us is in staffing and benefits. We are right bare to the bone. I would also come back and point out that I am concerned about any other future cuts. We've seen impacts by what we've already done in the past because of positions that have been cut. We felt those impacts. I know it's coming back to an impact that it oftentimes, sometimes could lead to more on to other people, and it also can lead to us not being able to meet the services or the demands in a timely manner that people have been used to. And that's, that's just a fact. That's not something that we're sitting here trying to do those things. This is where we are looking at, trying to maintain high services. I'm proud of the work that we do in Sanford. I think you can also see in the budget that we've put forward, that it's not something that is fluff or excessive. It's something that is really bare bones and getting back for us to be able to do it. But I know I am concerned about any of the future cuts right now coming back into when you're looking at positions. That is where you're going to come back to see. There's going to be savings potentially, but there's going to be impact, and there's going to be a reach in back to our, to our school system. As I mentioned, Monday, we will be bringing in the revenue. You probably, we know that Governor Mills last night presented her budget update, and that's been getting some media traction. She has been able to be committed to the 55 percent of funding of education. And so, we're very appreciative of that. Also, continuing to have breakfast and lunch universal is also something that we're very appreciative of. So, we did get our revenue preliminary in the other day. Cheryl's been working at that, that we're going to plug that into our presentation, so we can present that on Monday to kind of show people how we're doing on the revenue, where our revenue is, the different areas that's coming back. We did well in some areas. There's other areas that we lost funding, right? The evaluation in Sanford continues to rise and continues to impact our subsidy. And through the formula, that's when increased valuation, the belief is that that means it can be more put on to your local to be able to come back. We do an excellent job here, paying attention to the essential programs and services. We're really, that should be used as a floor. We're oftentimes using it as a ceiling to be able to make sure that we're maximizing that formula. And then, you can also see the per pupil costs are reflected by that and doing that. So, I know it's challenging. I know that's high. We not, we understand that. We've got some work to do. Monday, we'll look at presenting the revenue, and that will give us a better idea of trying to see where we are in terms of some of those increases. But are there any questions this evening? Any comments? Anything before we wrap up in terms of other things that people might want some future, more future dialogue around, or more future information around? As you think of that, I do have to show out, Cheryl was quite proud of her presentation here with this questions piece.
Love it, Cheryl.
If you're looking at our budget, there's a change from last year. You would have just had the basic questions, and now we have it moving like that. You would have just had the basic questions, and now we have it moving like that. Feedback, dialogue, questions?
So new to the school board, fascinating, that presentation was excellent. I think one of the things that strikes me is that our per pupil costs are the lowest out of 24 towns in York County and Cumberland County in most cases, right? So that tells me there's not a heck of a lot we can take out, right? We're already, we're already lowest, right, in that kind of thing. So, you know, I think that's, that's a testimony to the work that everyone's been doing, and I know that we've been watching that for years and years and years. The question is, you know, how do we, you know, how did that valuation, how did the taxpayers able to, how does our tax base get to afford that? Because the effect is much greater than in other communities. Yeah, thank you. And then, sorry, I have one other question. 24% are fall under special education in Sanford?
Yeah, I can get those numbers. I don't have that, but typically, we've been right around that 24% number with that.
And is that, would that be typical for most communities?
I think if you looked at the state average, you would see we're higher.
We're a little bit higher.
We're a little bit higher. You will see that for us in, in the revenue that came back that we did get from our 279, we did get increased funding for special ed.
Okay.
Okay, so there is coming back into. The challenge for us is, anytime we get increased funding, can we put it towards the areas that we need it, when the challenge is, you're looking also for tax relief. You're also looking at the bottom line in terms of that.
23% is special ed.
23% is of our population, yeah. I knew it was in that ballpark.
So it's like quarter of the district, yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you so much for all the work. This is a lot of work that you guys have been doing behind the scenes, so thank you so much. We definitely appreciate you and look forward to hearing about the revenue next Monday at 4:00 p.m. here, and then we have a 6 o'clock school committee meeting following that.
And on that agenda, just, we are going to have, Steve will do a presentation on the multilingual learners to give people an update, and we'll also be talking about pre-K and the pre-K expansion at that meeting. So I think that's also is going to be helpful when it comes back into budgeting and understanding our budget for it.
Okay. Who would like to make a recommendation to adjourn today's meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
All right, a second. All in favor? All right, all of us, we are adjourning this meeting at 5:34. Everybody have a great night.